And join me in the pledge please.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, the first thing I'd like to do, and happy new year, is the plaque that didn't quite get here in time for. Sheriff Scott Stewart, so we'll now give it to Commissioner Scott Stewart.
Thank you.
With that, uh, the next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Moved to approve, Madam Chair, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, um, next thing on our agenda is the election of officers for two thousand twenty-three. We have two officers on the board, there's chair and vice chair. Pleasure the board.
Um, Chair, I make a motion that Dossie Overfield remain as chair.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I think there needs to be qualification speech before you vote.
Well, that. I guess my only question was via the last year was okay, I would go ahead if you have any concerns, that's fine.
Since I got the second from the vice chair, I'm assuming that.
That I'm okay with it.
That you're okay with it. Um, I thought Dossie did an outstanding job, and she actually. Those all the meetings and everything, so she gets to communicate with people, like. She represented Park County terrifically during this last year. Uh, we got a lot on, a lot on the. On the horizon.
But I do want to. Mention Commissioner Teal for always, uh. Nominating other people just so he wouldn't be on the chair, so I would like to see him as a vice chair during this time. Under Dossie's evil reign.
They're up the first motion on the first.
Um, it's been moved to have. Dossie. As chair. Any further discussion? Are you none, all those in favor? Any opposed?
So Madam Chair, um, just. Make note that, um, Commissioner Ladwig from over there at a Lusk was chair for eighteen years. I believe it was eighteen.
I will just make the comment that is he single?
Madam Chair, I would, yeah. Like to nominate, uh, Commissioner Teal as the vice chair for the issue. I'll second that. Are you accepting that, sir?
I can. I, uh, I will say that, uh. I have no desire to be chairman, I'd be happy to help. And I would do it just simply because in the past we've always rotated the chairmanship, and I believe it's important that, uh. And everybody takes a turn, although I have no desire to be that person. But yes. And I think Scott did just fine, I'm nothing, it's sad.
Definitely. Okay. Have a motion, are there any other nominations? Guess I should ask that a lot, it's not. Hearing anything? All those in favor of Lloyd Teal? As vice?
Do you abstaining or?
I am.
The key was, Madam Chair, was for Lloyd to nominate someone quickly, which was what his plan was, so.
It worked for four years.
I just beat you to it, let's start.
Okay. With that, we're a little bit ahead, but I think we can go ahead and do the liaisons since it's just discussion with ourselves. Most of you have the list in front of you that had to do with liaisons before. We definitely have an opening on Yellowstone Regional Airport, is there someone that wants to jump on that one? Or we automatically give it to the new guy?
I think the new guy, Madam Chair, would be perfect to fill out a lot of what Joe Sheldon was doing, so.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Are you willing? Airport board.
And I'd say dude with that, just. Madam Chair, maybe suggest that you stay on, you go ahead and let CY Air as well.
Well, that's probably true, it comes in down below.
It does down below, but I would.
Right.
The two come together, so. Um, we'll find that one.
And I'm not sure how many times the public health officer had meetings. That's why Joe was on there, he liked it because they didn't have meetings.
Which one? Oh, I think it was, it was just, yeah, just communication, so, um, however you want to do that with the. Public health, there has to be a commissioner assigned to that area apparently.
I mean, I've got a pretty good relation with Doc Billen. Then, so he was on search and asking all that.
Um, unless anybody else wants to change anything, I'm just working through the ones with Joe first. So that last one is CY Air, so that's.
Uh, Park County Historic Preservation Commission.
Where are you at?
Well, I'm on.
Fourth, oh, there we go, I missed that one, okay. That's had. Um, a few changes, we do have an app, I guess, for a new version for that one too, but. Okay, it's coming, okay. So, um, anybody have a desire on that one, Park County Historical? Alright, um. Basin Authority meets quarterly. Um, mostly with, uh. Basin Authority downstairs, but they do meet quarterly and it is. Basin-wide, um, and I specifically got an email from Jody making sure that we fill that position that Joe has held for many years. They do meet quarterly and they do meet around the basin, um, usually it's, uh, from what I understood from Joe, it's like a half-day meeting thing.
Looks like a good one for. Commissioner Stewart.
Okay. Unless I'm missing something else, we're down toward the bottom. US Forest Service. With Lee, that was a duel, just in case, and sometimes there's a lot going on, sometimes there's nothing, but. We had it as a duel.
Madam Chair, I would be happy to trade Scott for the complex and I would be force service.
Which, which complex?
He tried to slip in. I think, I think that'd be a good fit for.
I think it would. I don't want to overload Scott on all the, on all of the.
The beauty of it is, I still have my vest.
I do.
Okay, so on the Chisholm National Forest, we're changing it to Lee and Lloyd. Correct?
That's alright with him.
And I guess with the last one we have, um, we had Lloyd and Joe, um. And I would kind of like to work with one of the federal agencies if that's okay with everybody. Um, jump in on the BLM one with Lloyd. Okay, are there any others that anybody needs to change that the meetings are the times or anything don't work for you?
So is Scott gonna do the complex?
He said he has his vest, so we'll let him.
You don't have a problem with that? Maybe you can, I, you know, I got along good with him for a long time, and then when things started going. Cross with Katie more than any, it just kind of went. Uh, our relationship, and I feel that they are very important and. And now I think that for whatever reason, I've lost her trust. So maybe the new. I think Lee was out there for a long time, and then I was, and so. Good luck.
We do have, um, one other update, I guess, and it, I don't think it's changing, but the library board, um, it only has me listed and, and Scott and I've been. Tag teaming that one, it meets the fourth week of the month, and sometimes there's some travel things and things that go on, so. If everybody's okay with that, we'll leave that, but I do want to make sure Scott's added to the list on that one.
I can point out to the new commissioner that they do a lot of shooting and stuff when you. Bring, you can wear your vest, there's a lot of law enforcement, there's a lot of law enforcement discussed. As please, you're interested.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of. Some kind of shooting. Okay. Alright, anything else on the list that anybody has concerns about or anything that we need to, uh? To take a look at? Molly, anything jump out for you that we haven't? Communicated on? Okay. Alright.
Windows boards me and stuff.
Would you would like to let Ryan know that we're ready, we could do that a little earlier, start that a little early?
Madam Chair, I'm going to executive session. Is that where we're headed towards?
Second.
They moved and seconded to go into executive session? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. You're okay until the attorney comes in the room.
Molly, would it be possible to get an updated version of the twenty-three lists, I'd like to.
Cody, well, we got you here. We had a conversation with our buildings and grounds manager this morning, Trevor Catmore. About the emergency backup. If we, if the coolers do go down at the coroner's facility. If we can enter into an agreement with using the ones that he might be reaching out to you about. Just some kind of MOU or some sort of understanding that we can move forward that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. You first.
You first.
Okay.
Yes.
Here.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Morning. We fixed the clock.
Good to see, we did. Just takes us a little time to get anything done.
Government.
The government, yeah, it's slow. So. Coroner would like to visit with us a little bit about his, his budget and position, so we'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Dossi. Once I was, I won the primary, I called and there was some, it'll be a beauty about. How the budget was set for the year, knowing Tim was going to transition out. There's concerns I have on here, so I don't know. Um. Is this just kind of like the bottom line number is what you guys want me to stick to for this first year by now? No, thank you.
New coroners always, they generally shave ten percent off the budget.
I can do that.
The, the. Policy that we kind of have in place right now is just not going over the bottom line. So if there's things in the budget that you need, I know you and I talked about training. Which is important to you and, and whatever staff you're going to have working with you. And so if, if there's a way that you can. Feel comfortable that you can move some things around for now and make that work. I don't think anybody objects to training.
Right, because that's mandatory, right by the statute, so.
Got to get it done.
That, yeah.
Okay. Are there other concerns?
Um, no, that's really it. I can manage the rest of it. As long as I know. This is the number you always want me to stick to. Um. It's about nine hundred dollars right now to go through the basic training for the corner stuff, but because of COVID, we're able to do that here locally.
Oh, okay.
And so the county won't have the expense of traveling and lodging and foods for. The deputies to go to Douglas for the week. So I think that's a real benefit. To not. Prolonging the training of the deputies, because it would cost much more if we, I think next year they want us to go back physically to. The Douglas. So this would be the year to get the deputies trained.
And how many?
Um, I, I'm anticipating five deputies.
Okay.
Knowing that they don't get paid unless they are working, so to have the. The options to have them fill in. We'll be working with Thompson Funeral Home or Zach Thompson. He wants to be the deputy for the Powell side. So the other benefit of having a deputy located in Powell. Um, the, the sheriff's deputies and police department will be waiting for us to travel. So I think it'll be better for everybody that way, too.
Do you think most of the work will still be done at our new coroner's facility?
I can't say any of the work was done at the coroner's facility before. A lot of it is that. It was done out of Tim's house. You get the first call at home and he responded and. I, the, the bodies were maybe there for hours at times, just.
But it is set up for that.
Yes, it is set up. I'll, I'll utilize it as much as I can.
Okay.
Um. Just because it's been built and. Um, I know there's, there's not going to be any. I guess that is a question. If, if I'm on call for the funeral home side and there's a coroner call and I can respond twenty minutes faster because I'm in my. Funeral home vehicle. Should I still come to the coroner's facility to trade vehicles out as far as the insurance goes or? It, in the past, I know Tim used. Funeral home vehicles before he got the county vehicle. So I don't know what your guys' understanding is like that.
We might have to check with county attorney on that one, just to be sure that your question about insurance is valid. I'm not sure. Um, and the legalities or the, the trail, what am I trying to say? If there's any issues.
Right.
So, yeah, you might check with him. I don't think that's necessarily our call. I can think of.
Okay, um, the other budget concern, I think you guys need to be aware of is. Tim Powers told Zach Thompson yesterday at three o'clock that. Dr. Bennett's retiring or done with autopsies Friday at three o'clock.
Hmm.
And so I've spent the last couple of months working with new connections, whether it be Billings or. Um, Riverton and hopefully not Colorado, but the. The budget for deputies might also need to reflect the travel time if we end up going to Colorado.
Okay.
I'm hoping that we can utilize Billings. Um. Whether it's just some moving parts.
Yes, okay.
Um, Cody, I really appreciate you. You know, looking ahead and, and these anticipations, but just be aware that if something like that comes up and we're. You don't have it in your budget right now, we can, we'll have to do what's called a budget amendment.
Right.
We spend it and then if, and then we make the adjustments. I, I don't like to, unless it's a foregone conclusion that we're going to have to start heading to Colorado, I don't want to put money in there just in case.
I understand.
Understand that if we have to, the first year, we're going to get through it and then we'll adjust the budget according to. What happened the previous year.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Is there, and I guess you'll check on or you understand whether there's any issues with out of state and those are.
It doesn't appear to be. The pathologist in Billings. Made it seem, think he, he was wondering why we followed Dr. Bennett. To Sheridan instead of continuing to use them. So I assume they're fine to.
Okay.
Continue.
We were doing most of those in Basin, weren't we?
Yes.
The facility.
Yeah.
All right, and you'll, you'll hear from Colleen, our office in. April, end of April, first part of May, as far as budgets and what she needs from you, and then we'll have a meeting with you to adhere to that.
Okay, Cody, while we got you here, we had a conversation with our buildings and grounds manager this morning, Trevor Catmore. About the emergency backup. If we, if the coolers do go down at the coroner's facility. If we can enter into an agreement with using the ones that he might be reaching out to you about. This, some kind of MOU or some sort of understanding that we can move forward that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it for me, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Hey, the next thing on our agenda is Kim Dilvin. Planning and zoning. Is he out there? So we're looking at the Barella Minor Subdivision final plat and. Special improvements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is Minor Subdivision seventy, which is in front of you. It's, it's both the consideration of the SIA and the final plat. This property is in the GRP zoning district, the planning area is clearly powered rule. We did receive the final plat application on November thirtieth of last year. And then we received a revised final plat on December eighth of last year, and you saw that in figure one. The requested action is the applicant who's Mr. Barella, he requests approval of this three lot subdivision. One lot will be one point five one acres, one lot will be three point three acres, and one lot will be one point nine three acres. Each will be used for a combination possibly of agriculture and residential. And the applicant, of course, also recommend, also request your approval of his subdivision improvements agreement, a build. Um, that has been, that was received on December sixth of last year. The Park County Attorney's Office reviewed that and they granted approval on December fifteenth of last year. And of course, you all had a chance to look at that. This is a minor subdivision. The ownership is Mr. Barella. And again, you saw the, the final plat in figure one. The location is shown in figure two and it's approximately four miles west southwest of Powell. Approximately one mile north of. Fourteen A, it's on the west side of County Road fourteen, on the south side of, of lane ten. And it has an address currently because there are buildings there and the residence. It has an address of ten oh two, road fourteen. And in terms of neighboring land use, that is shown in figure three and it's, this property is surrounded mostly by agriculture. There is a residential use just to the west. This property is not within a mile of any municipality, so that review is not required or comments. I mentioned this is in the GRP zoning district. The lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. You see in figure four a topo map of the proposed subdivision. The property has, has really no change in elevation. Lots one and three are currently vacant irrigated land. I did mention that there are buildings and residents and a septic on proposed lot two. Of course, there's no notice not required for final plat, because this is not a public hearing. No notices are required. Agency referrals, this is a subdivision. We have gone through our list. An additional agencies, anybody who's, who we feel might have relevant comments. We've not received any new comments from agencies. Since sketch plan review. We've not had any public comments, Madam Chair. The Board of County Commissioners reviewed and approved the sketch plan on November fifteenth of last year. Your conditions, number one was easements as, as necessary. That condition has been met. Your second condition, the commissioner's conditions. For sketch plan. Number two was location of a varied irrigation tile drain. That condition has been met. The county commissioner's third condition for the sketch plan was that a, a condition on the final plat, talking about access and right of way permits. From Public Works, that condition has been met. The commissioner's fourth condition for the sketch plan. A subdivision improvements agreement addressing all required improvements. That condition has been met. And as you know, the, really the, the main condition in that is utilities and its electricity. The county commissioner's fifth condition, when they approved the sketch plan, was a note on the final plat about water wells. That condition has been met. The commissioner's sixth condition for the sketch plan was the Notice of the Warming Right to Farm and Ranch Act. That condition has been met. The commissioner's seventh condition for the sketch plan show was a indication or evidence of the ability to meet well and. Septic setbacks on block one and. Uh, our, our conclusion is that condition has been met and we showed you a, a, a diagram basically. Prepared by Mr. Barell's surveyor showing a house well, possible well and possible septic. And your eighth condition for the sketch plan was comply with standards and regs. That condition, I believe, has been met. Final plat review. That was, that occurred on December seventh of last year. There were some corrections and changes to that final plat. Then we received a revised final plat on December eighth last year. Submissions for a final plat. All the final plat specifications and conditions have been met according to our appendices. The applicant has, will, or will submit all the supporting documents as required. We already mentioned that a subdivision improvements agreement needs to be approved. We have a number of findings, Madam Chair, that, that we. Had you review. Our recommendation to you is that you approve both the subdivision improvements agreement. For this minor subdivision and the final plat. We have some conditions that we're recommending. If you, if I may, I'll just read those. There's four. The first one is the applicant shall record the approved subdivision improvements agreement. And comply with the terms therein timely. Number two is after the terms of the subdivision improvements agreement have been met and the applicant has been notified. Of such by the planning and zoning director, the applicant shall provide the final mylar plat to the planning and zoning department to be reviewed and signed. By the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. Number three is once conditions one and two have been met, the applicant. In the presence of a member of the planning and zoning department staff, shall record all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk and reporter. And this will con- And this will constitute release of the lots in the development for sale. And number four, the applicant should otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations. And the minimum subdivision requirements set forth in Wyoming statute eighteen five three oh six. And Madam Chair, we're happy to answer questions. Do you have any?
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, are we looking at two different resolutions then?
So um, Madam Chair, um, yes, two resolutions, um. Yeah, one resolutions, yeah. Two motions, yes.
Madam Chair, I move you approve the subdivision improvements agreements for the Barella subdivision.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve the subdivision improvement agreement. For Barella Minor Seven, number seventy, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need another motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the. Uh, Barella final plat with the conditions applied by staff.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve the final plat for Barella Minor Subdivision number seventy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One.
What?
One, twenty twenty twenty-three. All right.
Zero.
All right, thank you.
The only one we'll ever need.
Today's date, fine. I was just, it's not filled in, so I was just. It's just mine, I guess. Okay, with that, uh. Next thing on our agenda is the use of county facilities for pickleball. Now, I don't know if there's anybody out there since we're starting a couple of minutes early.
Uh, I'm here and I think I do have some.
Okay, well, have them come on in.
I've got some handouts for you.
If you want, we can pass them down rather than fight those cords back there. Two three, okay. Thank you. Those cords are a little hard to fight in there. There's three, actually. Everybody sat? Okay.
Okay, thank, well.
Yes, please.
First of all, thanks for uh, for hearing me out here. This is. It's important to us anyway, so here we go.
And if you would identify yourself.
Okay, please.
Okay.
Um. My name is Jim Tobin and thank you all for listening to me today and. I've been playing pickleball for five years now. And I realize how important pickleball and other sports can be for several reasons. Physical activity and socialization are so important for people of all ages. Pickleball fills that bill. Especially through our winter months when the weather can keep us indoors. Plus, it's just plain old good fun. In the past, we played in the Powell Armory and it is no longer available. Colby Stendersen, our rector, and I discussed other venues. Where we could play and thought the Hart Mountain Hall at the fairgrounds would be a good fit. There are no other buildings that will work as the high school and middle schools are booked up. Now, getting back to our wonderful fairground building of which we are all so proud of. In small communities like Powell, it's important to share and utilize what we have. We miss our pickleball. What we propose is to play twice a week. Thursdays and Tuesdays, evenings save from four thirty to six thirty-ish. Of course, if there is a need to use the building for another event, we would be willing to suspend our play. Pickleball is a very low impact sport. Both on the body and the facility where it's played. The prior years that we played in the Armory, I was the one that opened up and locked up when we were done. During that time, there were no problems. As I made sure we left it as we found it. We want to be good neighbors and continue our privilege of using the facility. This, of course, would be the case for Hart Mountain Hall. I've heard there's a concern for residue left after boundary tape is removed. And that is a valid concern. I researched tape for making, for marking floors and spoke with manufacturer representatives. There are tapes made specifically for the purpose of marking gymnasium and concrete floors without any residue or pulling up the finish. There have been many events held in this fine building and I can't imagine that pickleball would be damaging in any way. Pickleball is a growing sport and fun and there's a need for a place to play. A building is no use unless it's utilized. I see this as a win-win for the county and its citizens. At the very least, let's try this proposal and if it creates any concerns, we can readdress any issues. So take questions or. You know, or want to have fun and recreate and. And everybody here will tell you just really how. Important that socialization is and. We're just wanting to play pickleball.
You have a big following. We've been hearing from a lot of you.
Yeah.
That's good. That's okay. That's what we need. Um, comments, questions, thoughts?
My my question, Madam Chair, is that. The facility over there, the county, we've never believed that we're in. A business to make money. I mean, we, you all pay taxes and feel like you should be able to use it. The facilities and to be provided for services um, for your taxes and I understand that, I totally do, but um, when. A need arises that may. Increase a cost to other taxpayers that don't utilize that same system, those. Costs need to be reimbursed and. Just as the fairgrounds and these buildings. You know, it it isn't a huge issue, but there are some costs that go along with that. With that, we went across the the county to set. Um, use standards to try to cover those costs, not make money, but try to cover those expenses. So I guess my question is, are you prepared? Um, have you looked at the the rate of which we lease or rent? The facility?
I have not.
And are prepared or have funding to to compensate for that use? I mean. Cause there are some some costs associated with the use of all of this, you know, whether it's wear and tear or janitorial services or. Heat escaping, whatever you want to call it. We've tried to come up with a a fair use that.
So, understand and you know, I think Colby and the rec department, we could. Help address that. Um. I know we don't have to have a. Warm building to plan, you know, because we're exercising and. Producing a little heat.
Well, I understand, understood, but you know, I'm saying in the winter time, I'm. I'm not specifically talking about utilities, but. We've tried to be fair on all, whether it's coming in, getting documents from the clerk's office, with the cost, you know, there are certain things that are. Expected as a taxpayer.
Sure.
Yeah, but additional things come up like this. We've, we've tried to look at all the different departments and put a price tag to compensate for those requests. And with them, I guess where I'm going is the the fairground itself, just like campers over there when they come, they pay a fee. The use of the buildings, they pay a fee. Um, so like my. Question is, are we? How deep are your pockets? Um, we have a current fee and it's pretty pricey, to be honest, for what you want to do. I'm not saying I'm set on that. We can't make exceptions to all those things, but um.
I think one of the other reasons that we do do the costs is, and this is an unusual situation, but one of the other reasons that we do those costs is. It's not the county's job to compete with private enterprise. So when there's other facilities in town that can be used for things. And they can be read, I understand this one's a little different, but that's why we have those fees set up as we don't necessarily want to compete.
Understand.
With private enterprise, um, but yet we do have to to pay for the expenses that we have with the buildings.
Yeah, and we've scratched our heads and we just, there's just not another place in these small communities to use and.
One of the other discussions and and I don't know if you and I had it over the phone, but I know um, it's been brought up is that this may be. I'll say temporary for this winter, um, basically because I understand that N W C's. Second gym might be available after they get done with the student feeding scenario through.
There's truth to that, yes.
Okay, okay, so we're not talking about. Year-long thing here, we may be talking about a few months while it's still cold.
But there are squatter rights.
Now, wait a minute. Okay, um, just so we all understand what we're talking about, that it's it's not necessarily long term, um. In uh, in visiting with that chart for the rental, um. Normally, an evening in that building is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's a lot when you're doing two nights a week, a month, and we're talking about a couple, at least a couple of months here, maybe. Three months. So that's a discussion that we need to have.
Well, we'd appreciate any help we can get.
Okay, there is a, go ahead, um, and state your name for the record, please.
Very know, Oxner. So. We were also told that um, North West College was going to be paying utilities for the kitchen while they're. Is that?
They're paying their portion of the utilities for what the utilities go up, different than what the counties have. We're gonna have some figuring in there, so they are not paying. The full utilities for that building. For the eighteen months they're in there, they're paying the differential between what the normal utilities are and what it what it exceeds once they start using the kitchen. Is the agreement that we made with them, so there's not a lot of help there, but. We're, we're still open to discussion.
Madam Chair, um, I don't know how the the rec department deals with this. It would be. A sign up, I suppose, through Colby's office over there at the rec department. You. I don't know for other events, do you help offset some cost at least to uh, the rec department? Or is it all paid by users um, as it comes along?
Yeah.
Colby Stendersen, for the record.
I'm Colby Stendersen with Powell Recreation. Um, generally, um, our user fees would cover most of that that we would. Put forward to those players. Especially towards the adult stuff, you also might put. Uh, also, yes.
When. Jim, when you, some of you go over to Cody, how much do you usually pay when you use their courts?
Cheryl, you can address it.
My name is Cheryl Elliott. Um, I believe most of us buy a membership, but I think a day use fee is, I think, eight dollars.
Ten dollars.
Eight to ten dollars depending on whether you buy a. A packet or not.
Right.
Um. I believe that's what it is. It goes down if you buy a six-month membership.
How many pickleballers play in an average evening?
Average, I'm gonna say average would be. Fifteen.
Yes.
I played pickleball in Idaho with my oldest daughter there at Thanksgiving time and they got private uh, gyms there that people own. And we paid five dollars to play there. I came up once to Cody up here, it was ten bucks, which I thought was too much. But if if we, if I had paid five dollars and I could play in Powell, I'd be glad to pay it. And I'm retired and I'd be glad to walk the floor just somewhere. Glad to do it, I can help that way and make sure they keep the door shut when they're coming in and out, cause these people here forget a lot of stuff. Yeah, I mean, I ain't, I I'd pay, but you know, two hundred and twenty dollars a night. Doors up, if it's sitting there, nobody shoots it. I'm not gonna pay twenty dollars or whatever to take it, keep it open for two nights a week, but if it's reasonable and. And you guys can make a little money or whatever, break even and we can still.
A second, how would you propose to work the schedule if this was approved for Tuesdays and Thursdays as your request? How would you propose to work the schedule when something does come up and someone else wants to rent it at full price for that evening? What's your scheduling scenario? How do we deal with that?
It's just recreational pickleball, so we. We communicate with one another and we would just back away for that night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my question.
Yeah, no problem there, none, cause the the Armory, we had the same issues.
Is there any hope on going back there or are they removing it in a way?
There's always hope.
Okay, so, no thought process yet, though.
No, it's just.
Okay. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Teresa Miller, in comparing it to the rec center at. Cody and the price, it's it's not apples to apples because they have a swimming pool and the equipment too, so you're not, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
I I just want to say two nights, no, I'm not, Jim, we need to play every night.
That could get complicated.
Madam Chair, we're bumping up on time here, but I would. I mean, I thank everyone for showing up here. I'd like to visit more at length with uh, our manager over there with with Billy and. And kind of see if we can come up with a solution that might. Work for us, work for everybody else.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
All right.
I think, I'm still trying to make a decision right now, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I brought those packets and you can digest.
Okay.
How, the benefits of pickleball and. And sports and socialization and.
You know, it's getting bigger. You've probably all seen the outdoor courts going in at Cody.
Yeah, and uh. The rec department helped put in uh, outdoor courts in Powell. And they're well-used.
Good.
Well, and the city of Powell.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming.
Happy New Year and thanks for hearing us out.
Good to see you, Paul.
Quick, Jim, do you guys already use that, this type of tape you're talking about?
Yeah, we've used it.
Okay.
We use it at the Armory, yeah.
Okay, we might want a demonstration of it.
Okay, sure.
You know, if if we start moving forward with this, we might want you to go over and.
Absolutely, yeah.
Billy, then it's.
Yeah. I I've been around.
Have you met Billy? Uh, he's our fairgrounds manager and events coordinator.
Well, yeah, even that, even that tape has been. The tape that we've been using.
Yeah, and we, you know, we'd uh, when we're done. Or if there's a reason to like remove that tape for an event or something like that, we pull it up. We really want to work with everybody, we want to make it happen and.
Appreciate that.
We're getting that message.
All right. Good enough.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda, um, is the appointment of a secretary for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think we have a a proposal here.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we designate the office assistants of the Planning and Zoning Department to serve as the secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Further, in the absence of the office assistant, it shall be the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Director or her designate. To designate another member of staff temporarily fill the role of secretary until such time as the office assistant becomes available. That's in my words. That's the motion. That's why I said I make a motion.
Okay.
It's on, it's in writing, you can hand it to him.
It's been moved and seconded to. I'm gonna paraphrase just a hair, the um, Planning and Zoning Secretary to be the Secretary for the Planning and Zoning Commission. With other stipulations involved. Is there any? Discussion?
Madam Chair, just to, I I do want to say I talked to. Uh, Jolene and she is fully engaged in. To do it, so.
Okay, appreciate that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Um, don't get rid of that, Colleen needs.
Or you're gonna have to recite.
You're gonna have to recite it again. Thank you.
Number two.
Number two. Okay, um. We're close and I think you're here, so. We have Larry French and Larry Dodge for emu- emergency food storage. If you'd like to come forward.
Good morning and thank you.
Yeah, thank you for. Allowing us to be here, I'm Larry Dodge and I have a, I live out of Clark and I have a construction business out there. I've been involved in emergency preparedness and crisis response for over twenty years. I've been a part of the National Task Force for Emergency Preparedness for an international ministry for sixteen years. I've been a member of Park County Cert team for fifteen years and a part of Crisis Response International for eleven years. And I wanted to talk to you today about the necessity of food storage. Because we believe there's going to be a very real need for this in the near future. The government's been warning us of this for all year. Due to the short supply of high price and high prices of fertilizer, the high prices of fuel and the cost of maintenance. The farmers are planting less this year and in some cases a lot less. One of the largest farmers in Florida in a recent interview said he was only planting half this year of a normal year. According to the U S Department of Agriculture, they have killed forty-eight million chickens and turkeys. In this nation alone due to the bird flu this year. And ranchers down south have cut way back on cattle numbers because of the drought. We haven't felt the effects of any of this yet, but we will in the this year and in the coming years. According to the FBI and Homeland Security, we have had a hundred and six attacks on our power grid in the last eight months. By the five thousand substations in the nation, they would only have to take out nine major ones. To knock out the power in most of the country. If the trucks stop running in this country because of the fuel, a fuel shortage, or trucker strike, or whatever the reason might be. Grocery stores are empty in two or three days. Fuel would stop being delivered, medical supplies would stop being delivered, everything would stop if the trucks stopped. And our economy is on the verge of collapse. Due to the conditions this nation is in, Homeland Security is telling people they should, they should have at least three to. Three months of food and water on hand. So we propose a plan for food storage for Park County.
So we, a group of concerned citizens are requesting your input on a food security proposal. There are approximately thirty thousand Park County residents currently. In the event of a natural or manmade disaster, we think it would be wise to have food storage. It would take around fifteen hundred calories per person per day to sustain them. We have chosen four commodities for their food, food values, each commodity has approximately fifteen hundred calories per pound. If there are thirty thousand residents needing one pound per day, that would require fifteen tons per day. This would then require four hundred fifty tons per month, no, if no other food was available. Amount of commodities would have, would have. This amount of commodities will have a total of thousand fifty pounds or seventy days supply. And what we're proposing to come up with this is three ten thousand bushel bins. For storage of oats, wheat and corn. Also proposes shop type building for dry beans, that you can't drop dry beans on a cement floor and it damages them. The cost of three bins is a total of one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. I have a quote here. And we estimate the shop type building for beans about fifty thousand. In checking with local farmers, oats would cost about six dollars and fifty cents a bushel, or sixty-five thousand. Corn at six dollars and eighty cents per bushel, or sixty-eight thousand. Wheat at nine thousand, nine dollars per bushel, or ninety thousand. And beans at twenty-seven dollars per bushel, or two hundred and seventy thousand. Total cost of commodities would be four hundred ninety-three thousand. The cost of storage would be a hundred and seventy thousand, one fifty-eight. Total cost of project would be around six hundred sixty-three thousand, one fifty-eight. And we feel that these commodities should be sold each year. So when when it's time for oats to be harvested, get rid of the oats, so you have, keep them fresh, the same with the corn and wheat and beans. Thank you for your consideration.
We've talked to several churches in Powell and in Cody about this. And they're all on board as far as if such a thing happened, they would help, not only help. Maybe have food, food kitchens or whatever was necessary, but would. Have classes and show people how to cook with raw beans and and grind and cook with raw wheat, which is nowadays, a lot of people don't understand.
What um, what type of location are you thinking that this would be at?
We've thought about that several different times and. For security reasons, we thought one location would be better. And not being familiar with what the county has in Cody, we thought out there on Avenue where the kind of shops are.
Oh, the road and bridge, okay.
Be a good place to put the, those commodities.
Interesting.
What are some other?
Questions?
County land, something where there'd be room for it and. But yet would still be a fairly safe location. Thank you guys for coming in, what would your, what are your thoughts about oversight of this? Who would be in charge of, who would be in charge of it?
We thought about that too, and I thought maybe what we should do is form a nonprofit organization. That would be include the county and and maybe some of the churches and. Locals, so that we have, so it's local control.
Basically create a board.
Pardon?
Basically create a board.
Yeah, I think that'd be the best way to do it.
That would probably be the best way to do it if you're talking about turning it over at least once a year, because you've got some.
Just.
Some logistics and.
Right.
Financial changes and things like that that need to happen.
And the thing that we don't know is when you turn a commodity over and purchase new. You know, it might cost. It might. We might lose money. Or it might gain money. But where it's an in and out, it should be just pretty much a straight across.
Interesting.
No, you're, you're.
Um Larry. You, would you anticipate any maintenance to these, like dryers and? To the, I'm I'm thinking the silos, I mean, you are with the. Would they be able to withstand a year without any conditioning?
Well, I would think that.
I mean, you need utilities as well, or there's gonna be costs in the utilities as far as dryer. Keeping the the grains dry and.
Most of these bins, I didn't look at the. Some of them have circulating pans in them, so we could. If you were, you wouldn't wanna put the stuff in too wet, you'd have to have it dry.
Right.
And I know right now the farmers in the area are having a difficulty getting their corn combined, because. The humidity's been so high and a little bit of snow, they can't get their corn combined, standing out there in the field.
So there would be some on, ongoing costs, once it's even, everything's set up. To some extent.
It would be pretty minimal.
It would.
I would think it'd make a difference too if they had harvested and it wasn't there been for a while, so it was. Dried or circulated or whatever versus purchasing it right off in the field.
Right.
Location wise might be important for utilities, so.
Well, that's a good location.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, have you, have you guys? Have you seen these or are there these type of facilities elsewhere? Are we reinventing the wheel, or is it, are there, are there other ones across the nation?
I'm sorry to say that, Aaron, please.
Are are we reinventing the wheel, or is there something similar? I mean, I know grain storage, we store a hell of a lot of grain around this country. But it, but in this, in this situation, as far as an emergency food storage, are there other? Are there, are there other of these that you know of?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean that they don't exist.
I, the only reason I'm saying is, it'd be if we knew of others, we could look at what they're doing, it might be, it might be a help, I mean, I think. I think it's probably a good idea, but I just would like some direction if it's been done elsewhere.
I haven't heard of any, but then I could see why they wouldn't advertise it either.
Um, have you talked with our Homeland Security, Jack?
I have not.
Have not.
Jeff, we got rid of Jeff.
Yeah. I'd like to see you run this idea past him.
Do that too.
Yeah.
Um. I'd somehow, he was definitely in need to be.
Right.
Involved.
I called him a couple of weeks ago, but he didn't get back from me.
Well, we don't meet with him on a regular monthly meeting, but usually every three months.
Yeah, he's coming in next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so. Believe, but at least I'm one. Visit with him about this idea, if you have any, the 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 girl, I wrote down. A little bit of information, but if, if there's anything that you could put into the summary, just a simple summary on this.
I can give you my copies.
Of what you read, okay, okay. We can sure copy them, that'd be great.
Madam Chair, since you guys are already spearheading this, if you. If you can kind of look into what might be, I mean, as far as dollar figures, we wouldn't know. But what might be the need for continuing? Costs, you know, what what are we looking at? As Commissioner Teal said, are we looking at a utility cost? Just to have these, I mean, there's the upfront cost, again, the facilities started, the upfront cost of the commodities, but there's gonna be some. Some ongoing cost.
I would think that if you. Use one or two percent of the total, of the six hundred thousand. As a maintenance, and if you set that aside each year, then if you did, then if you did run into some kind of a. Somebody ran back into the grain and had to have a repair or. Or uh. Whatever.
Well, and I think about this, the the turnover, as you said, get, you know, empty it at the end of the year and and refill with fresh or whatever, however, we turn that over. There's going to be some type of process that has to be put in place in order to to sell. What's in there or trade or however that works, but there could be some costs involved in in getting that done.
These granaries are designed with an auger system, so that when you pull up. Can pull a semi up there and.
Right. What I'm talking about is is the communication to get it sold, like whether we, how we do that, whether you advertise it, whether you work through a particular company or. Procurement type stuff, you know, how that gets worked, if there's a board involved. That's fine, they can probably handle that without having to the county to have to do that, but there may be some expense involved.
And Madam Chair, and yeah, you'll be dealing with farmers too, and you don't wanna compete, so you don't want county dollars to compete as well and. Uh selling things on the commodity market too, um you might run into to some issues as well.
Yeah, but if you. If we, let's say that we decided to contract with local farmers for this commodity. It wouldn't be any different than like Grays or or uh. Uh, repeat lots that are buying the corn and the wheat and stuff. They've, they've been paid to relinquish it and we're, wouldn't really be in competition with them.
That's a key, you can't have county dollars competing with that.
Right. So it would have to be on a a as is basis. But I think if we could, you know, obviously this is to start the conversation rolling, but if we could start a. If you decided to do this and we put a board together to to run it, I think that'd be the way to do it.
Madam Chair, I guess my question would be, if they start a nonprofit, if we're running to this summer situation we did with the cert and rescue. With the county having some kind of control. Or would it be a county controlled, I mean, that I think is a discussion we need to have, so that we don't get in trouble with the auditor again.
I guess I would wonder, and and this is all for discussion for Homeland Security, but is there an option for cert or somebody else to be handling it through Homeland Security? Where we already have. Something set up, because it would be used for Homeland Security issues, um type of thing, as far as feeding if there's a problem, so. We need to have that conversation um that way first, maybe, and see what can happen. But we can sure do that, I I I like the idea, it's just that, how does it?
When you meet with Homeland Security, would you like us to come back?
Um, I would. I think you can meet with him anytime you want, we're definitely, I believe, going to discuss this next Tuesday when we, with Jeff. Um, but, and just run it past him, I mean, there might even, if, he may know of other. Functions like this across the nation that are working, and there may even be some grant money available, I don't know, I mean, I I just.
The only thing we are concerned about is. The further out you get away from the people, the the more. Less control you have over. And so obviously, the county would have control, but so would the nonprofit, and I think it would be really instrumental not to go past. Our own.
Right.
Because if you get, if you get the federal government involved, they're gonna, they can, they can do all kinds of things that we wouldn't want to have happen. So I personally wouldn't wanna see it go past. Control of the county.
Well, cert is one of our own organizations in the county.
Right.
They exist for us, so it wouldn't be beyond us, but the funding could be a whole different scenario.
Could be, and and we, we watch that on everything that we get, our request, um there's strings attached, like you said. I think that's where you're going, but you know, but if there is some unrestricted funding out there, which. We have found, um that can be used, I know, I mean, I would rather use that than taxpayer money.
Yeah, anytime you can.
But we we definitely need to watch the strings, for sure.
Okay.
So anyway, we'll get.
Just one more point, uh if there is a food shortage, we're gonna have to hire some security guards, and I think. Population of Park County will really grow if we're the only ones with food, so. You're gonna get hundreds of thousands of people trying to show up to Park County, so hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed, there won't be. A dire need for something like that, but.
Well, that's why you haven't heard of any, any other cases of this, if there are any.
And keep it quiet.
Keep it quiet, right?
Yeah, we uh. My daughter was a missionary in Siberia for three years, and one day she called me up, she said, Dad, if your community group is gonna send me. A package for Christmas. Uh, I need peanut butter, they don't have skipped peanut butter over here. And if, put a one town Hershey chocolate bar right on top, because if it goes to security. Uh, just, or whatever they call it, then they, maybe they'll just steal the chocolate bar.
And leave.
So I did, and I took it to the post office and I said, I wanna send this to Siberia, and so we gotta figure it out and. Post office guy said, you wanna ensure it? And I said, well, I did, and he goes, how'd you do that? And I said, I prayed about it. He goes, you prayed about it? I said, yeah, what I prayed was if the person opening that accident needs the worst of my daughter. They can have it, but if they're gonna steal it, just steal it, burn their finger. And he said, you didn't pray that, I said exactly that same way. About three weeks later, April called me and she goes, Dad, I got the, got the package and the candy bar was right on top. I said, did it smell like smoke? So we, you know, security is something that we need to be aware of, and that's why we thought it would be safer to put it. Like at a kind of facility, because surely you guys have some form of security.
It's best, yeah.
Okay, maybe just an observation, Park County has limited roads that enter the county. It's not difficult to close all the county in an extreme situation.
And if you'd give her your name for the record, please.
Oh, under his baskets.
Thank you. Okay, we need to keep moving on the next, but um.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Was there something else?
You could actually lose some of your population in a worse case scenario.
That could be a best case scenario.
Talk to a lot of people that are are seriously talking about an event and going somewhere towards an urban area. Where they're gonna feel safer.
Sure.
So, that's always on the backside.
Could go either way, yeah, true, okay. Thank you, and um if you get the time to go ahead and visit with Jeff, and then we'll talk to him next week.
All right.
Okay.
In fact, I'm a part of cert, but I've been a meeting lately.
Okay.
I haven't called you in the office.
Okay, keep trying, we'll talk to you next week.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the other thing on our agenda is we do have an application for the museum board, as you know, we have a, an unexpired term to fill.
Right.
Um, Steve Simonton, and we did have an application from Patrick Lindenthal.
Welcome.
To uh to be on that board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to re-put Patrick Lindenthal to the unexpired term on the museum board.
I moved and seconded to approve um appointment of Patrick Lindenthal for the museum board for the unexpired term. Any further discussion? They moved and seconded to approve um appointment of Patrick Lindenthal for the museum board for the unexpired term, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed?
I have a chair move to adjourn.
It's a good dive.
Aye, for lack of a second. Scott again.
Second.
Oh, good, Scott and Scott, yeah, that's great. Moved and seconded to adjourn.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
We're back here and down below it.
We're, we're down in E O C just to go over those boundaries on the land use plan and stuff.
How long is that gonna take?
Uh, maybe an hour.
Okay.